I'd like to call this public caucus to order. The purpose of tonight's public caucus is to discuss Agenda Item 6A tonight, which is an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Bedrock Technologies for information technology services. There were several questions and concerns posed last week by council that will hopefully be addressed tonight. Tonight, we have Carl Deely, the IT network manager, Colby Kalanowski, the services desk manager for Bedrock Technology, Adam Basaliga, the owner of Bedrock Technology, Frank Sorachi, another owner of Bedrock Technology, and Alyssa Malazo, the executive assistant from Bedrock Technology. So I will turn it over to you to give us a little background on how we got to this point, and then we will answer, you hopefully will answer questions from council. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman, and thank you to the council members. It's always a pleasure to see everybody and great to have an opportunity to kind of explain kind of how we got here and why, you know, why we're proposing that we go into a contract with Bedrock Technology. So a little background, the RFQ was put out in a response to the need for the city to really raise its capability to manage IT services. As people may be aware, there's a critical shortage, right, in terms of labor and skills, you know, in this area as well as others. The city is really not able to attract and retain the level of services that we do need today. As you may recall, in 2020, we did, we did have, you know, a cyber attack on the city, which thankfully we were, we were able to kind of hold off. However, that seems to be increasing, and you know, it's a bigger, bigger issue, you know, kind of every day you see it in the newspapers. So what we're looking to do here is obviously is entering a contract with a professional service that can not only fulfill the services which we haven't had, which we've needed in the past, but also to, to maintain improved services and continue to develop those services that we need for a city of this size. So in terms of the differences here, it means that, you know, we're going to have professionals that obviously manage and stay ahead of the technology changes that are happening out there, so we can take advantage, obviously, of the improvements that we see kind of out in the world and bring them into Scranton, keep our data safe, and also keep our citizens' information safe, which is very important, you know, from a confidence perspective. So the city's embarked on a, really on a digital transformation, right? So we started last year, not just upgrading the network, but actually the way that we do business. And what that means is that, obviously, we need to maintain, so in order to maintain those services, we need to make sure that the network and respective hardware and software is, is up and running when it's needed to be for the, to, to maintain those services. So this is something again which we haven't had before. It's something that has been very intermittent, and so what we're looking to do is have a continuous, a continuous service and ensure that we can maintain that kind of long into the future. In terms of the, the changes, obviously, for the cost, and I'm sure the council will have some questions around that, you know, from a percent, just from a strategy point of view, we are very low in terms of what we, what we spend on our IT services and our IT infrastructure. Typically, out in the public sector, it's usually somewhere between six and eight percent of a budget. For municipal governments, it's a lot less than that, absolutely, you know, and I think we're all probably ready for that. But in comparison, if you look at people like Reading or Lancaster, they are around, they're over two percent, 2.5, 2.8 percent of their budget is given to IT infrastructure. Even with these changes that we're proposing today, we are less than one and a half percent. So this may seem like, you know, quite a large change, a larger step change from a fiscal perspective, but it's still well below, I think, what a lot of the municipalities are doing. And again, directionally for the strategy of the city, you know, this is, this is really a cornerstone of what we're, of where we're going and how we want to run things going forward. So with that, I'll obviously introduce Bedrock, and obviously, people can, I think, can introduce yourselves as, you know, as we go around, and obviously, we can take any questions, unless anybody's got any questions for me about the process that we used or how we arrived at that decision.
Sure. Just in terms, Carl, of the rubric that was provided in the backup.
Yes.
So one of the things that we discussed last week was the fact that when you look at all of the, the companies who bid on this contract, obviously, we chose the highest bidder. And I think it was difficult for us to understand, based on the rubric, why that was, because we, you know, some of the, the, the terms there, we weren't really familiar with. So we're, we're, you're requesting that we go with this company, and we're going to pay them $20,000 a month compared to the lowest bidder, which was $12,500 a month.
Yes.
Now, we understand that you don't always go with the, the lowest bidder.
Yes.
In some circumstances, but can you just take us through that process and why this company was better, what the main differences were between Bedrock and the lowest bidder?
Yes, absolutely. And again, obviously, we use the rubric so we could do those side by sides. The first step is, the RFQ process is really stipulating what services we need. That's the fir, that's the key thing. So when we fill out the rubric, the first step is, apart from, you know, obviously, from the, the legal requirements and then, and the requirements of the Home Rule Charter is, can that, can that company provide the services we need? And first of all, in, in relationship to the other bidders, the lowest bidder actually did not meet our needs. So that's the first thing, right? So, you know, we don't want to pay for a service that we're not going to get, all right? So we, we don't have gaps in. The other, the reason was, when we look across the whole rubric, is that some of the services which were covered by the, some of the other bidders were additional, so it's like a menu. So though the, the monthly cost did not include those services that we required, so it would have been in addition. And some of the other service, some of the, again, not just the, the lowest bidder, but other bidders too, there, a lot of the answers are around strategic or guidance, which mean, which implies that they would help us to, to know what to do, but it actually would not be included in the cost. And so overall, this is what we're looking at, is the overall cost of the relationship going forward. So the minimum requirements which were spelled out in the bid, those are the things that we, we actually kind of did judgment across. And there were 17, I think around 17 individual items where we did the comparisons. So that's why the lowest bidder wasn't a successful bidder, and really, the first step is, can you provide the services which the city needs?
Okay. In terms of the hours of operation.
Yes.
The hours of operation for Bedrock are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Now, one of the things that I noticed in the, in the backup legislation was that there's a hundred dollar, you charge $100 an hour if the company has to perform work outside of what's listed in the contract. So can you give us specific, I don't know if that ties in with the hour, like 8:00 to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but can you give council a specific, specific examples of what would not be covered by this contract and what type of activity would initiate the $100 an hour charge?
Certainly. So the way that our service offering is proposed is that for, we classify each type of incoming service request, and then we do that based on the overall impact to the organization. So from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, five days a week, our help desk is open to field any requests that come in. We back all of our responses to service requests with SLA, so we'll guarantee response time. And so what happens is, is outside of those normal hours of our help desk operations, we will then classify the issue and respond in line with our service level agreements. So hypothetically, if it's 11:30 on a Friday night and somebody's printer won't print duplex, well, that ticket's going to get, come into our system, and that's going to wait till Monday morning at 8:00 AM, and somebody's going to pick it up then. If at 3:00 AM on Saturday morning, we find out that the totality of City Hall is down, not operating, well, at 3:00 AM, Bedrock's going to come out, and we're going to address the issue. None of what I've just addressed with you incurs additional charges at that $100 an hour rate. All of this is included in our service offering. We're going to guarantee our response times based on the overall impact of the organization, and the delta doesn't move there. It's very predictable and budgetable for you folks. Where we charge that $100 an hour rate would be for what we would consider project work or major adds, moves, changes. So an example of that might be, the city acquires a new property, and they intend to use it as mixed office space. They're going to have 50 employees working out of that space, and the space needs to be completely outfitted for the relevant IT services. Well, we're going to call that a project, right? And we're going to say, okay, well, if you want to use Bedrock for those services, then here's an estimate of how much time that's going to take, the equipment that it's going to take, the costs associated with it, and our hourly rate on that is going to be at $100 an hour. You can choose to invoke us for those services or not, but that's, that's generally how we, how we operate. So it's really those major adds, move, changes that would sort of cross that threshold into additional billable hours.
Okay, so just to be clear, there's a problem with, in the police, because the police department and fire department never is 24/7.
Yeah.
So something happens there with their technology which they rely on, so there's no extra charge to take care of those issues that would happen outside of normal business hours, correct?
You are correct, sir.
Okay. Is there any other examples that you can give outside of the project related of examples in terms of when the hourly rate would kick in? Like, is there anything that would happen that would be out of our control? Like, the example you just gave, obviously, would be in our control. If we moved employees into a different building, we could elect to choose that service, but is there anything that may be out of our control where you would say, jeez, that wasn't in the, in the scope of the contract, you know, this is when the hourly rate kicks in?
Potentially. I can think of, I mean, there's, I can think of a thousand scenarios, but one, one scenario could potentially be something like, let's say you had a major catastrophic failure of one of your internal servers, okay? As part of our agreement, we're handling backups and recovery and, and all of those things. So we will deal with the business continuity side under our agreement. We will spin up, you know, backup copies of your servers and get them operational, but they're always, that's in a degraded state, so that's, you know, you're kind of limping along there. You find out that's a major hardware failure, and you need to completely tear out that server and put a new server in, and that's going to take, you know, 50 hours worth of labor or something like that? Again, that then has crossed into being a project.
If the server fails, and it's a component part on the server that fails, the part is not included, but the labor to replace that part would be included.
Right. So in that same scenario, if it was like a power supply on it, and it took the server down, and we, the city buys the power supply, and then we install it, get everything back up and running, again, completely included in our service offering.
Okay, got it.
Bill.
Yeah.
Before you move on to the out of contract services, I had a few questions so that we don't have to.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, I'm Kevin Hayes, I'm the solicitor for City Council. Thanks for, for coming tonight.
Hi, Kevin. Thank you.
You had indicated in your contract that the, the services that are not included would, and you, you addressed the project work, but also you indicated it would include integration work. My question is, your initial integration into the city's existing systems into your systems, would that be included in this contract or would that be out of contract?
Yes, that is included entirely in this contract. When we're talking about integrations, it would be if you had two third-party vendors. Let's say you have, I don't know, QuickBooks and Sage, and you came to us and said, can you write us a custom interface to get Sage and QuickBooks to talk to one another? Well, that would be in addition, right? But if you came to us and said, can you get QuickBooks installed up and running or whatever? Okay, that's all included.
Got it. And then you also indicated that out of contract would be programming errors within line of business applications. Can you explain that to council, why that would not be included in, in the contract?
Absolutely. So as part of our service offering, we're including all of the vendor management for, for the city. So that would mean, again, we'll just use QuickBooks as an example, if it was, say, the QuickBooks application, and there was a problem, the help desk ticket can come into us, and we'll reach out to QuickBooks on the city's behalf, and we'll work with QuickBooks to try to resolve the issue. However, if we identify the fact that it's a bug in the software, we can't and won't go into their software and try to write code to correct bugs or flaws in someone else's software, and that's what we mean by that statement.
So what if there's an issue with regard, like a Microsoft Outlook or something like that, that there's a problem with the computers that we're having with that? Would that be covered?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All of that's covered. It's just a matter of, we can't go in and modify someone else's code.
Okay, right.
So it's really at a code level that we're, we're making that stipulation.
And then lastly, with regard to out of contract expenses, you indicated that hardware and software costs are not covered, correct?
With some exceptions.
Okay.
So what is included in our contract is this, is we provide usage of next-generation firewalls for every city location that has some level of outside internet connectivity, okay? So in the city's case, that's going to include all seven firehouses, City Hall, PD, Westonfield, DPW, Serenti Center, The Range at Leech, we have a whole host of them. I, I, there, there may be more, I just don't know that off the top of my head. So we include firewalls, okay? The city has all but one firewall right now that is a current model, so you need to replace these whether you go with us or not. So we're going to include all of that, all the licensing renewals on those firewalls, because they have to be licensed annually. We include all of the antivirus protection for every city-owned computing device, all of the anti-malware for every city-owned computing device, all of the threat hunting protection on the end-user devices, all of your backup software, backup hardware, so we put backup appliances in, in for the city, all of the cloud storage for that are all included under our service agreement, as well as a cybersecurity awareness program for all of the city's staff. I'm just trying to think, did I? I think I covered most of that. But so when we're talking about hardware and software not being included is, I can't give you Microsoft Word for free, I can't give you laptops or computers for free, or printers or servers, those are all things that you would have to go and buy. But we will include, under our service agreement, the setup configuration, if it's an end-user's workstation, we'll migrate all their, their documents and settings and all of that is included under our service offering.
Okay.
I'm good. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. One of the questions I have is, in terms of your company, what have you ever taken on a client this size? Obviously, we have hundreds and hundreds of users, this is a big operation, so speak, tell us about your experiences with other municipalities, if you have any, or any, any other entity you've dealt with with this many users.
We will say that you would be on the larger side, but not necessarily our largest client. I guess I, I can say that, I don't want to, you know, talk out of school and just call any clients out by names, but I can say that on a daily basis, our organization provides, you know, active support to several thou, you know, several thousand end-users across 250 physical locations in nine states right now. So our largest customer in terms of physical locations is somewhere around 40 or 45. We have a few organizations that are in the 300 to 500 employee range where we do exactly what we're suggesting for the city.
Okay. Do you deal with any other municipalities in Pennsylvania or any other states?
Not currently, but we have in the, historically in the past, supported various municipalities and municipal authorities.
Okay. Any in, are in Pennsylvania?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you give an example of one?
Well.
Just one in our area or one in the?
Sure. A, a, smaller than the city, but a former client was the Scranton Sewer Authority when they were whole and fully intact.
Okay. I have other questions, but I'll, I want to hog all the time. Does anyone else have any questions?
I have one. So you said, okay, licenses are included.
Mike.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. So all licenses are included, which is great, and you're saying, you know, additional software would not be. So do you anticipate through your assessment, you've already, you guys have already been working with us, with a different contract, do you anticipate any other, you know, in addition to the one you mentioned, maybe a firewall down the road, any other software or hardware implementation or any, that we're going to need that isn't budgeted for, obviously? Like, did you see anything before this that you guys are, you know, besides that one? Are we going to, you guys are probably going to need that just as a heads up?
Yes, there are certainly elements in the city's environment that need attention. We've made, you know, Carl aware of everything that, that we've identified and have recommended that he make that part of his budgeting process, yes.
Also, so for $240,000 a year, I mean, do we, do we get a body here once in a while or is it all going to be help desk types?
Oh, no. So it, it includes unlimited remote and onsite support. So we have, we have folks currently, you know, at city facilities, I would say almost daily, I, you know, we had someone on premises here today.
And this one, Mr. Deely, this one's for you. So this contract, which, you know, a lot of the services we desperately need.
Yes.
And the reason why we brought these folks in before is because we couldn't hire an IT director.
Correct.
That's obvious. So in this upcoming year's budget, we're going to have this contract, you know, voted upon, in place at $240,000 a year. Do I anticipate seeing in the new budget, an IT, IT director position again with the realistic salary, you know, with, with an industry like another hundred grand? Am I going to see that in the proposed budget coming up?
So obviously, we're in budget season, and we, we're obviously looking at things very holistically, and from an, from an IT perspective, yes, the organization has been reviewed as it was last year. We are looking to change the organization, and then there does need to be obviously a head of that organization internally as well. And, and yes, we, we are looking to put in, put in a salary which will attract the level of experience that we need for the city.
So to clarify, you're going to be looking for an IT director?
Yeah.
In addition to these services?
Correct. Yeah, and it's probably a different role as well, I think, counselor maybe to what we, we maybe seen in the past. Very much this is coordination role in terms of managing vendors and managing additional services. So obviously, the IT managed services, as we're explaining, as Bedrock are explaining right now, is one aspect, right, of technology. We also have a lot of other vendors that we have to negotiate with. We also have obviously the capital expenditures that go along with that. And again, as, you know, as Frank just described, there's certain aspects that are not included in this contract, so in terms of the infrastructure that we, we need for the city, for our emergency services and non-emergency services, that still has to be managed, as well as some of the other, let's say, kind of, that's a general purpose software such as in a Microsoft Office, things like that, that everybody uses every day, the devices that we use, our communications equipment, all comes under IT. So we're always going to need an IT infrastructure internally, an IT structure. And, you know, we, although we've got support from obviously a third party, we're also need, you know, we've got the, the technicians that are on the ground every day that do the straightforward kind of simple things, right, which I got, I see one thing that's in the contract which was a differentiator for me too, was the training, which Bedrock are offering for our technicians, right? So which is, again, is, this is a cost offset for the city, but certainly, we, we need a director in that department, yeah, that can oversee, facilitate, you know, the, the expansion of our, you know, of our, of our support needs as the city changes. As I opened up, I said, you know, we, we just, we put a lot of money in last year, and again, I appreciate the support of council last year, where, you know, we, we got an agreement to put in a new operating platform for the city, right? It's, it's a huge step, it's a huge step change for the city. So we've, we've got more reliance now on technology than ever, and we're going to have to have for continuity and for ongoing kind of development of our technology services or technology-supported services. So we're always going to have to have a director, I think, within the, within the, the organization for the city.
Okay, thanks.
Carl, I have an additional question on that. So in the 2020 budget, we had three employees in the IT department, as you know. So we had a director, a business transformation specialist, the title was different in 2020.
Yes.
And a public safety technology specialist, the title was different.
Yes.
2021, we added two positions to that budget, so we have, including a director, we have a total of five.
That is correct.
So I think what Councilman McKinder was also getting at is, can you inform the council as to what position changes or what positions you're deleting from the budget? What is the budget going to look like next year? I think we need to know that before we move forward with this contract.
Absolutely. And, and I think from the description, you know, the explanation we just heard, the network management role is the role that we, is, is being superseded now by, by this service.
So which, so what position is that? Network Systems, that position that you're in or how does that work?
That is correct, yes.
So is that the position that's going to be eliminated from the budget?
That's what we're considering right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So you take out the network systems manager, and that's really a role, as you're stating that Bedrock is pretty much going to take on, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Public Safety Technology Specialist, do we need that position, since it seems like this company is, they're, they're spending their time in the police department and the fire department, DPW?
Yes, so in terms of the, in terms of on-the-ground support as needed, right now, we have two, well, we have basically two people working as, if like, a tier-one support, right? And tier-one is, is where a person, you know, has a problem with log-ons, or we've got to put some devices in, we've got to move a desk, put those things in place. So, yeah, today, we have the two technicians, and the plan is to keep those two, those two positions.
Okay, so we're, we would keep the Public Safety Technology Specialist?
Yes.
We would keep the Business Transformation Specialist?
Yes.
And the Systems Administrator?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And a question for Bedrock, in your experience in dealing with other entities our size or similar to our size, even the private companies that you deal with, do they have an IT infrastructure in place, like employees there, and you add additional support? How does that?
I'd say that it's a, somewhat of a mixed bag amongst our client base. We do have some engagements where we have, like we're proposing with the city, where we call it co-managed, where they will have that tier-one frontline-type support, some help desk staff, things like that, that we will then help utilize as resources, we'll manage them. As part of our service, we extend out our help desk platform, our software, to them so that they can manage, receive, and track all of the issues coming into the city and provide a direct escalation point to Bedrock when necessary.
Okay. So I think, Carl, what we would need to see, I can't speak for everyone, but just myself, you know, so the Public Safety Technology Specialist, the Business Transformation Specialist, the Systems Administrator, what will these people be doing and how will they interact with Bedrock? Like, what are their, what are they doing on a daily basis? Because it's my understanding, if someone in City Hall sends something to the help desk, and it's a simple matter, are you taking care of it or is the people on the ground taking care of it? I think we need to get a, have a better understanding of how that will work.
Absolutely.
And what the daily tasks of these individuals will be.
Yeah, and that, that's.
And just, just add, like, we have to look at it from the totality of the budget, right?
Absolutely.
Not just little pieces.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate that, and of course, that's, that's the way, you know, obviously, we're looking at it too. So in terms of that interaction, we, we do have, as part of the current service that we have with Bedrock, is we, we have a governance process in place, and Frank mentioned, but what we call this help desk facility. So we don't have our own help desk kind of software application. So, but what we do do is, every day, we, we have a meeting at 9:45 every day, and what we do is, anyone within the city, obviously, that's part of the city user group, if they have any problems, they can submit a help desk ticket. We review those every day, and we do triage on those tickets. And there are some things which the, kind of straightforward, we have the skills, our two, the two people in-house have the skills to do those things, and it's more practical to do that, right? You know, in terms of the kind of plug-and-play things, and obviously, they're gradually increasing their skills, right, with, with the support of Bedrock. Then there are certain things then which are more, let's say, on the network side or have got, you know, a more complex, where we need the, the skills, experience, and the toolsets that Bedrock have, and either a technician will come in to support that, or they can also do things remotely. Obviously, they can actually go into the network itself and work on our problems remotely, you know, which obviously, we don't have the ability to do ourselves in the city because we don't have that toolset. So that's how we interact kind of day to day, and then other things then are kind of, if there are any kind of longer-term projects such as. then are kind of, if there are any kind of longer-term projects, such as, you know, as we're upgrading, as we're, you know, kind of individual units, or we're working maybe in a particular department, that can be done jointly as well. So we, you know, we've got resources so we can get things done quickly.
So do you work with any clients where there's an IT director, someone as Carl stated, who's managing kind of the operations, but you are the help desk, you are the end-all-be-all? There's no techs, there's no employees, you're it? Like, if there's a problem with their computer, they're just calling you? They're not calling someone within the organization?
That's correct. That's the more typical engagement that we have with our clients would be that we are, I always say, an enterprise-level IT department as a service, where we fulfill all of the roles associated with an enterprise-level IT department for those clients. Again, we do have, we have a handful of them where they do have internal resources at varying levels. Most typically, it's, again, help desk and things like that. But there are some instances where there's management-level type folks in IT positions within these organizations. And we work in a very collaborative-type manner where we help understand and execute upon the vision for the organization as well as managing those internal IT staff members in terms of delegating out work tasks, making sure that those tasks are being completed in a timely manner, that documentation is being done accurately and in a reproducible-type manner if that issue should be able to come up again, those sorts of things.
Okay.
Can I just touch on that?
Yeah, sure.
All right. So what you just said is you've had contracts similar to the one you're proposing to us, where you might have an IT director and just you guys. You might have an IT director and then just you guys, and that's it. How about you might have you guys and just a manager versus an IT director?
Yes, absolutely.
And it's doable and it's workable to a size like ours?
I'm sorry, one more time?
It's doable with an organization of our size?
Yes, absolutely it is. We believe that we've got a proven...
So manager versus an IT director. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Yes. The technicians we speak about, would they be Bedrock employees or they city employees?
Well, the city has two technicians right now, those tier-one, you know, help desk-type folks. But then, yes, the rest of the technicians are all employees of Bedrock.
All right. So the technicians that Mr. Dealey, you were speaking about were the two city employees, but Bedrock employees offer training, similar services to training?
Mentorship, things of that nature, yeah. And we're big on team building and building people up. So we work on things like setting professional development goals, whether that's through traditional education or industry-based certifications, you know, doing performance reviews with folks and just trying to be part of that process of building a team together, whether they're Bedrock technicians or they're our clients' technicians. We take the same approach.
All right. We...
It's a good point there, councillor. And I think this kind of gets to the root of obviously, A, why we're doing this, and I think why we, why the city generally struggles, right, I think to either attract or retain, you know, where especially you've got technical expertise required. So one of the things, the other reasons behind doing this is, and what I think, as I mentioned, one of the benefits that I think Bedrock brings to the table is that ability to train and mentor. So the reality is, in order for us to retain the onsite skills that we have, you know, these are young people that have, that want a career path, right? They've been to college, they've got some qualifications, they want a career in technology. In order to retain them, we've got to help them grow. And we've also got to obviously pay them a reasonable salary. So this is a very important part. I think if we, if we're not able to provide those services, we will lose these people. We'll lose them. So this is another reason why this was a good fit for us, was the ability to mentor. We have a local company. Bedrock have also offered where they will train these technicians, actually here, but also on, they have their facilities, they have labs where they can train on hardware, you know, as well as just kind of, just general kind of practice for, you know, for IT technicians. So there's a, there's a, there's a big advantage here, right, in terms of just helping us retain and grow talent as well, you know, within City Hall. You know, obviously, people have got ambition, right, and they're going to move on. If, you know, if they can't get what they need from an employee, they're going to move on. So this, for me, this is also part of retention. And I'm glad councillor Donahue mentioned this, it's, we've got to look at the bigger picture. Because when you get turnover, you know, as we've seen in other positions, you know, it's very difficult to get somebody started from scratch. And when you look at technology in particular, every organization's different in terms of the way things are set up, right? There's always some uniqueness in terms of how networks are built. And obviously, that's something that we also want to work on. So it's a big deal, I think, that we have someone that actually is willing to help work with us and to develop the talent that we have here in-house as well.
All right. With that being said, I know this is a four-year contract. Are we looking to turn these operations over to in-house after that four years is up, or would we be looking to continue similar services?
I think the plan is here is that if we can develop in-house talent, then obviously we can, we can back off on the requirements for third parties. That's the truth of it, right, is, and this is the reality of doing business, right? You either, you either keep it in-house and retain and grow, you know, or you go outside. I think the reality is here, most, most technology professionals are not going to choose government. They're not going to choose municipalities and small cities, right, as their, as for a career path. Because we're just not able to provide that environment, right, where they can continue to grow. Now, if things change in the future, that's great, right? I think maybe that's maybe something that we can think of, right, as a city, is maybe we can provide that, that kind of environment, where we can attract people coming in on a career path.
Are four-year contracts typical, Carl, with this sort of company in a government setting?
Yeah, they are. And also, obviously, the provisions in the contracts, I know Attorney Hayes has been obviously looking at that, you know, as he should, is, you know, with the provisions in there, the ideal is continuity. You know, this truly is, if you're going to have a partnership with a vendor, a true partnership, this is where you need it. Because of the sensitivity, right, of what we're doing, the criticality of maintaining, you know, services, you know, on a day-to-day basis as well. So it's very important that we have, I think, a commitment, right, to these contracts, obviously on both sides. And I think four years is, to me, is the start. Now, obviously, as contracts change, that relationship may change in terms of what we require, what we do, you know, as we move forward, when we get to the renewal process. But certainly, the intention is, is that, you know, a true partnership like this, they should be treated, and any vendor, right, that's a partner, should be treated like part of the city organization.
All right. We have about five minutes left for questions, so anybody have any...
I'm going to skip around real quick. Mr. Dealey, you're the one holding the microphone. The software and hardware upgrades that we're going to need that may or may not be part of the contract, are they included in the regular IT budget or are they in the capital budget?
They are included in the IT budget. Yeah, so what we have is, most of the capital is for, you know, it's for change, you know, step changes in what we're trying to do. And you'll see that obviously in our general budgets. There are things that we've never done before that we need to do. And I really have to emphasize that. And maybe we should have a conversation maybe in a different session on that to give people a view in terms of where I think we need to be. But then the ongoing maintenance will be, again, in the general budget under services, yeah.
So there was also discussion about some third-party, like custom packages that we may already have that may not also be included in the contract. Do you know how many of those are, we have currently?
Oh, in terms of the, what we're currently, relationships...
Yeah, when we spoke earlier about things not being included in this contract, there was a discussion about, you know, custom packages or things that we use currently that they're going to have to integrate?
Absolutely. And obviously, I think that's something we could share outside of a public forum, just because, you know, it's very sensitive in terms of what we use and how...
I'm not asking for the names, but do you know how many we have?
Absolutely, yes. There are, there are multiple. Yeah, I'd say, we reviewed this today. So yeah, there are, there's maybe probably eight, I'd say, right? Probably eight, eight or nine that we have to maintain on a regular basis as part of our, just kind of upkeep.
And Mr. Sriracha said you've had similar-sized entities that you service, and there's some of these variable costs that are in there. Do you know what percentage of variable costs there are that, I mean, I'm looking at it from a line item standpoint. If this is what's in the line item, I want to stick to that line item. So with some of these things not included, do you have a percentage of variation for a package this size or...
I don't necessarily have one front of mind as a percentage base of what it would be. I think that most of the costs that we're discussing here are things that have been in the city's environment now for a few years, and that these are already part of your budget. They just end up being renewals that aren't included as part of our service delivery. So I don't think it necessarily represents additional costs to the city per se. I was just making the clarification that they are not elements that are included as part of our service delivery.
All right. That works because it parlay's into my next question. So right now, with the current line items that we have in the IT department, are we going to have the same configuration or is that going to change somewhat? I mean, the services I'm looking at seem that they fall under professional services and then service and maintenance. Is there other line items that they take up or they consume there or...
Those are the same one. Yes, same one. There is a capital line in there as well, but again, that's the bit, obviously, you've seen before, yeah.
So both of those, those line items, they total about $368,000. Are we looking to, with the $240,000 for just the contract minus any additional costs, are we, are we looking to spend about that much with this total package?
Oh, it will increase. The, there's no doubt about it. The spend on IT services will increase. It has to. You know, we spend today, I think it's, you know, we're 1.4, you say 1.4 million, right, of 115 million budget?
Yeah.
We're like, one point, it's...
It's like 1.3 and some change.
Yeah, 1.3% that year. So it's, we were, we were grossly underserved. And I think it's, people need to understand this. This is not a replacement. This is, we're going to do things we should have done that we didn't do, and we're doing things that we need to do on top of that. Yeah, so there will be an increase, absolutely. And obviously, and we've got all the information relevant to support that as well, which we will talk about with council.
Okay. Okay, so those are going to be an increase. Do you know, do you have an estimate of what that increase is going to be?
I do, but I don't have it right with me, unfortunately. But I do have the breakdown. Obviously, I could share that with you.
Does this contract help with cost savings in some areas?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I think Frank mentioned, you know, some of the, some of the services, particularly to do with the firewall cybersecurity, you know, we're going to be going through Bedrock services, which we normally would have to pay, you know, we're took, and again, we've got the breakdown of that as well in terms of, this is where we looked at the value, the value in terms of this contract. So I can certainly share that too with you too in terms of the cost avoidance, which is, it's significant.
There's several loss offsets.
Yeah.
We're providing the hardware, software associated with certain specific aspects of the IP, you know, operation of the city that represents a significant cost to the city because of the offset.
And it relates to, I think, the first question, you know, from councillor Goohan, where it was the, in terms of why it wasn't the lowest cost on paper. This was very much a package, you know, in terms of the best value for the city in terms of what we needed, you know, at the right cost. So, so yeah, it's, this is not just a replacement of, this is, we're kind of catching up and it's what we need to do as well.
All right. Anybody else?
I just want to just reiterate that we're going to have to see like how this, at least what your preliminary budget projections are for the IT department in total.
Absolutely.
Before we have a final vote on this next week, just so we could look at it.
Yeah.
Not in pieces, but totality.
We can do that.
I agree. I'd like more of a visual, and it would be helpful for me to see what it's looked like this year with employees within the IT department in addition to what we anticipate being included in the budget for next year. But I do appreciate Bedrock coming out tonight to answer our questions and for you being here as well, Mr. Dealey. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So yeah, Mr. Dunne, who made the point I was trying to make, I think, I think Carl...
No, thank you. And I just asked councillor to think about where we need to be as well, right? It's comparing to what we had, I think would be, we'd be underserving the city. We need to look at where we need to be as a city in this space to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One, one final question that I just want to make sure I ask. The maintenance and repair or installation of body cameras for the police department, is that covered under this contract or would you have to go to another?
Yeah, that is, that's a separate, that's a third party, which is, yeah, separate contract.
Okay, that is separate from Bedrock?
It is, yeah. Yeah, they're one of the specialist contracts, similar to what we do with some of the other emergency services. And it's fully covered under their warranty, yeah.
Okay. So as long as we could have Mr. Dealey a budget for the IT department, 2022 budget for the IT department, I think, you know, before next week, we will be comfortable in taking the final vote.
That would be great. Now, would you want to sit down and go through that or do you just want to, I think it'd be probably better if we could maybe have a quick meeting on it, it'd be very helpful, I think.
Yes, yes. This was very helpful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take a three-minute recess and then we'll have our, start our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would everyone like to call this public meeting order? Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away recently in our community, especially Bachi Hughes, resident of North Scranton, involved in politics in Scranton and many other events, including sports, was a big influence in a lot of people's lives, and he will be missed. We pray for him and his family. Let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community, in our country, and throughout the world who have passed away recently from the coronavirus. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McCandry?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gawn.
Here. Please dispense with the reading in a minute.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from the Department of Licensing, Inspections and Permits dated October 12, 2021. 3B, Minutes of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority Board of Directors Meeting held September 2, 2021. 3C, Minutes of the Historic Architectural Review Board Meetings Held August 12, 2021 and September 9, 2021. 3D, Controllers Report for Month Ending September 30, 2021. 3E, Composite Pension Board Meeting Agenda that will be held October 20, 2021.
Thank you. I just want to make two comments. First of all, we have the minutes from the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority meeting that was held September 2 on the agenda tonight. I want to thank Bob Shoemaker and Tim Woody, who have resigned from the board. They did a wonderful job. And I know we thank this, this board and the volunteers that they're led by Bob Gattin's a lot. If you look at the backup, they have listed all of the completed projects in the park by Jerry Smurl and volunteers. I won't go through all of them, but it is an, they do, are doing an unbelievable job up there. And it is all volunteer work, their own time, mostly their own equipment in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department and the employees. So I just want to thank them. Even the, the simple act of getting rid of some, getting rid of some of the weeds and the brush up there has made the park look so much better in a lot of different spots. So I want to say thank you again to them. Anyone else have any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. There's going to be a Blackwater County Job Fair taking place next Thursday, October 28, from 12 to 4 p.m. It's free and open to the public, and it'll be at the PNC Field up on Montage Mountain Road.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Bolberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. Before I call the first speaker, I noticed that there's quite a few people here tonight that may be new to speaking at council meetings, so I just want to go over some of the... that may be new to speaking at council meetings, so I just want to go over some of the rules. First, you have five minutes to speak. When you come up to the podium, please state your first and last name and where you live. You do have to be a Scranton resident to speak at council meetings. You'll notice that there is a clock there that will count down from five minutes and it will blink, I think at a minute to let you know that your time is coming to a close. Also, please keep to things that are related to city business and agenda items. The first speaker is Joan Hodouanets.
Joan Hodouanets, city resident. So what's the deal on the audit?
The update I got this morning was it was the same as last week. We're waiting for the sewer and the redevelopment authority audits to be, that have to be included with the audit.
As I say in the army, second verse, same as the first, which, you know, reminds me of the discussions we've been having on the Home Rule Charter. Can you tell me, can anybody tell me when that charter was written that we're operating under right now? When was it written?
I want to say 1972.
Two?
1972 or 73.
Okay. I don't think that charter was written with the 21st century in mind. It certainly predates the information age. Do you think back in 72, they could envision having employees work remotely from home? I don't think so. I'm not necessarily concerned about whether we need to get rid of the strong mayor council type government, but I am concerned that we're working with a document that's upwards of 50 years old and there are a lot of things in there that need to be tweaked. One is the audit, which is supposed to be completed by May 31st every year. And you know how often that's been done in the last 20 years? The other one I used to complain about was residency requirements. I complained a long time about Mr. Bolzoni, but I will say this, maybe we need to relook that requirement. Maybe it's sufficient that city employees pay the wage tax. I mean, there got to be a lot of city employees who are not property owners and they're not paying property tax, but they reside within the city. Just think, you know, here you had a mayor, Mayor Courtright, who is a city resident paying city taxes. Look at, look how he turned out. Then you have Mr. Bolzoni, who was not a city resident. He is probably one of the best business administrators we ever had. There's a lot within that document that needs to be relooked without necessarily changing the structure of government. So I would strongly advise you not to dismiss the concerns out of hand. Also, in listening to the caucus this evening, one of the things that disturbs me is in the military, we're very good about detailing job descriptions for every person in the military. When you're your performance evaluation every year, you know, they look at that job description and that's how you're evaluated. It has to be measurable achievements, not, well, you know, I run X department and that's my job description. If we went to HR, I mean, how many job descriptions will we see? If we're going to add a new person in the 2020, 2022 budget, the job description should be written first, not after the fact. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. Also, I heard Mr. Dealey mention about using Bedrock to train personnel. I mentioned this many years ago and I still believe it's true. Your local colleges, like the University of Scranton, could have been training your IT personnel, your people working in finance up in the BA's office for auditing and that kind of thing, in lieu of paying taxes. You know, we've just kind of written off that possibility. So it's nice that Bedrock will train our personnel, but it's not something, you know, I mean, we could have handled that and we should have been handling that across the city, taking advantage of all these educational institutions we have. And finally, I was happy to see the Channel 16 cover the renovations to City Hall. But I remind you, as you do the future budgets, that what we need not, is just not a one-time capital improvement project, but long-term maintenance on every building and every vehicle the city owns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Frank Sluzis.
Honorable members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am an attorney that represents some of the industry, hospitality industry members here in the city of Scranton that hold in particular liquor licenses and I am here to...
Could you, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, I am sorry. My name, first name is Frank, last name Sluzis, S-L-U-Z-I-S.
Thank you.
I am an attorney out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, specializing in the hospitality industry, hospitality law, particularly liquor law and liquor law issues. I'm here to speak in support, I know that there's a motion coming up later on in your business about authorizing the city to exempt or opt out the, what we call the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board Noise Ordinance. That's 493 subsection 34. Just in general, that subsection says that any amplified sound that can be heard off of a licensed seize property line is subject to a citation under that particular section of liquor code. Now, 493.1 of the liquor code and section 5.32 of the Pennsylvania Control Board Regulations allow municipality like the city of Scranton to opt out and substitute for subsection 34 its own noise ordinance, if the city has one. I urge you to adopt the motion because in the past several years, especially with the pandemic, the hospitality industry has been hurting. Prior to the pandemic years, municipalities across the state have done just this, opt it out, exempted itself from the noise ordinance of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and it has been quite successful in bringing back the industry, the entertainment industry, the hospitality industry. This past almost two years has been the death toll for many, many restaurants, whether regardless if they hold a liquor license or not. It was hard to, it's with the mandate and the pandemic and the governor's orders, we need something to bring this back, bring this back to the industry, back to a helpful, healthy, healthy stance again. And I do believe that this is a mechanism to do that. I know there are several members of the industry here that have come to support this motion that will be discussed anyway, I would think, later on this evening. And like I said, there's certain municipalities that I know of, it's been very successful. City of Harrisburg, city of Pots, that's in Dolphin County, obviously. City of Potsville in Schuylkill County, just sort of your neighbor, Borough of High Spires in Dolphin County. And it can be structured any way that really council sees fit. I've seen ordinances, I don't know what the city's ordinance says with respect to noise, but the most successful ones I've seen have been sort of a decibel level and can be enforced through its zoning or code enforcement officials, city police. I think that the more that I see is really from the administrative code enforcement side instead of, because I'm sure the city, Scranton Police Department, you know, has other things on their plate that are much more important than going around and measuring decibel levels. So I urge you to help out the industry. It is truly, truly on its last gasp. And from my past experience, even pre-pandemic, I've seen that this is such a way to bring that back, to bring the people back into the city, into the town, into the various municipalities. Spend the money. I heard this wonderful woman here talking about taxes. The economy, the local economy can really get a boost out of people coming in and spending money again, albeit food, albeit alcohol, albeit parking, whatever it may be. Thank you, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica Osborne.
Council President?
Yes.
The stenographer just wanted me to remind every speaker to speak in the microphone in order for her to transcribe their testimony.
We were drifting off a little bit, that's okay. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. My name is Jessica Osborne and I live at 1348 Sanderson Avenue and I have been there for the last 24 years. Just this past Thursday night, our zoning officials approved rezoning a residential area to a light industrial zone for a microbrewery. A business that intends to have 30 patrons taste testing, live music, occasional food trucks, local deliveries to and from the brewery, a storefront with a to-go for four packs to go, three employees, three co-owners, with only parking for eight cars. I, where is this overflow going to go on Sanderson and Glen Street where I live? I rely on street parking. I do not have a driveway. Most of the residents that live there do not. I have signatures here among myself of people who were asking you guys to give us permit parking, similar to those by Marywood University and the park and the jail where the brewery currently is. I would just like to say that, I would urge you to seriously consider this and would ask the same courtesy. The audacity that the brewery had to put on their Facebook page to say that they loved our neighborhood is not what the residents or I feel matches their approach or what they want the public to see. It is not neighborly and it is inconsiderate to ask the residents to give up their neighborhood parking so a business that was rezoned could go there and take over the street for their patrons. Along with this, there needs to be more safety measures in place at the intersection of Sanderson and Glen Street. Currently, there is only a three-way stop sign, stop signs that no one stops at. People fly up and down that street. I have video proof of this from just one day. On top of everyday heavy traffic, city buses up and down all day long. There is a large amount of truck traffic from 18-wheelers, dumb trucks, heavy equipment, excuse me, and wide loads. Not to mention the extra amount of traffic that happens when Green Ridge is flooded. Trucks from Keystone blocks making the turn from Sanderson to Glen and vice versa that occasionally knocks over the stop sign. It is a dangerous turn, one that needs to have no trucks allowed. It is zoned as a light residential. All behind on Glen Street and Elbrite Ave and Naug Ave are light industrial. Why aren't those trucks taking those roads? My family and I have lost one car that was completely hit and totaled, two cars that had damages $5,000 or more, lost countless mirrors. And all this is why the cars were parked down the street and I like to remind you that these are all incidents that are happening now before this microbrewery comes in there. It is not pedestrian friendly or safe. You fear for your life just crossing the street hoping they're going to slow down and actually stop at the stop sign. There needs to be something done with the traffic safety and truckloads in that area. Since parking is already a huge issue, I deplore you to please consider the permit parking for us residents on Sanderson Avenue. Thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration in this pressing matter. Thank you.
Ms. Osborne, thank you for, thank you for coming tonight. Do you have a petition? Did you already get a petition filled out? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Can you give that to Ms. Carrera and then leave your number with Ms. Carrera as well and Mr. Volenberg will be in touch with you because we'll submit that to the police department and the city engineer and then there's a whole process that they have to go through. And then you'll get communication on whether or not they approve it or deny it. Okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. The next speaker is Mary Guze.
My first name is Mari, M-A.
I apologize.
That's okay, it's M-A-U-R-Y, Guze, G-U-Z-E. I live at 1348 Sanderson Avenue. That's my daughter Jessica. Again, you know, we have the issue with the parking. And I have a handicap in front of my home because I am handicapped. You know, I pay the $10, you know, to have that there. So if they're going to have this microbrewery across the street, you know, like we said, 30 people, he asked for parking, there's not enough parking for 30 people. So I can't leave my home, I'm going to come and find that, well, you know, it's a city street, there's nothing we can do with the handicap parking. Anybody with a handicap can park there. So I have to then, you know, walk a block to, you know, wait until he closes at 9 o'clock. We're just asking for, you know, residential, the permit parking, you know, on the 1348 side of Sanderson. There's also a home next door to where he wants to go. You know, there's houses, there's not parking on Glen Street either. I don't know where they think, because their railroad tracks are there. I don't know where this parking is coming from. So we're, no, we're just asking that you give us that consideration. And again, you know, the stop sign, the traffic, you know, if you even write the word stop, paint the word stop, put crosswalks in, put something on the stop signs, they come flying through. Like we said, we lose that stop sign at least once a month. We've gone out ourselves and put it back up. You know, then they just come flying. You know, you have Scranton Lace that's working down there, the brick company, you have a warehouse, they're all coming up on Sanderson to get over Green Ridge, to get over, you know? Like it would be nice if something was done, that somebody could look and see and do a traffic. You have Scranton Prep kids that practice there, you have their parents that are parking. It becomes a one-way street. You have 18-wheelers trying to come around this corner. So, you know, we're just asking them for the consideration with the microbrewery that, you know, we have parking for our residents. You know, you have them in other spots. Like we said, it was across from where he's coming now. So we're just looking for that for us.
Okay, thank you. And I will have Mr. Volenberg reach out to the police department, DPW, our city engineer, to assess that area for potential improvements to safety. And then we will send the petition to the appropriate people and get the process started.
Now, with this handicap parking though, will that, like I said, I mean, what am I supposed to do when someone parks there?
Yeah, well, the only, the only recourse that you would have there is if someone parked in your spot that did not have a handicap placard.
Right, exactly. I understand that, right. But if someone has a handicap plate and then they're going to go across the street and they're going to go for this taste testing.
Then you're, unfortunately, you're out of luck there, yeah. We've been, I've been down this road with several people throughout the city.
Right, exactly. So that's why we're asking for the permit parking for that side so that, you know, I do have, you know, I...
No, I totally...
Park in front of my home.
I understand. Unfortunately though, as you, as you're aware, if, because you have the handicap parking spot in front of your home, if a resident were to come with a handicap placard...
Right, right. I understand that.
They could legally park in your spot and not be in any sort of trouble.
Even if there's permit parking. Even if there's permit parking for that side?
So if it was permit parking and they parked there and didn't have the permit parking sticker or whatever it is, then they could potentially be in trouble.
Right. So that's why we're looking...
But the permit parking is not guaranteed. This has to go through, I mean, I've seen...
Right, no, I understand. So we're just asking, you know, because they plan on, you know, doing this brewery, I believe in the paper was saying they're looking for March or 20th, 22th of next year. So, you know, it's, you know, we're looking for something to happen very soon.
Okay. Yes, we'll be in touch. Our office will be in touch with you once we get the report back from the appropriate departments.
Okay. Would I be able to leave my name and number with this?
Yes, certainly.
With her also, and, okay.
Yes, please do so. Thank you so much.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Richard Larito.
Richard Larito, South Webster Avenue, Scranton. Bill Gahn, a question for you. Was there any report on the facade to the right of the Alakawana, the old Alakawana Station?
Oh, the wall under Radisson? Yes, actually. So we did, I did talk to Brian Jeffers, the Chief of Staff of the county. So the, there was a grant awarded. The county was the entity that was submitting, we were submitting the grant on behalf of the city. So they were working together. We were awarded the grant right before the pandemic hit. I think it was in the amount of somewhere $350,000. Then the pandemic happened, obviously, so things slowed down. We're in contact now with city officials to find out, and the Radisson, to find out where this project is going and what's going to happen next. So there was an effort, I know Senator Blake was involved when he was in office, to work to get funding to fix that whole wall and make it look like, you know, respectable. It looks terrible now. So I'm waiting to hear back from city officials, but there is a discussion about it.
Okay. Thank you. How about that short stretch of Stafford Avenue between Davis Street and the post office?
Yes, so we sent that to DPW Director Prambo, and he did get back to us and tell us that that was, he was taking that under advisement for the next round of paving. So they were going to go out and inspect the area and then potentially put it on the paving list.
Okay, thank you. In the fall of 2020, I was watching the news, and I saw where a whole bunch of Donald Trump supporters were basically trying to disrupt Joe Biden speaking in Mountain Top, Pennsylvania. I thought it was a disgrace to act that way in our democracy. I'd been following Donald Trump for 35 years before he got involved in the election of 2016. I didn't really care for him all that time. I hoped for the best for him when he became president. I hoped he made the right decisions. But in my mind, time after time, he flaunted our norms, and he made the wrong decisions. But if he came to Scranton, I still would not go and protest against him because he has the right to speak. It's a free country. I don't think that people should be harassed when they're out on the campaign trail by detractors. I'm just hoping that when President Biden comes to the city, people will have the decency to honor our president, who was born and raised until the age of 10 in this city. He did not abandon the city. His parents said, "We're moving to Delaware." And at 10 years old, you don't say to your parents, "No, we're not moving to Delaware." And he has always come back here. He has been a great friend to this city and a great asset to this city. I'm a proud Scrantonian. I'm here for the betterment of the city. That's my only reasons for coming to these meetings, to try to make the city a better place. I'm very proud of it. I have friends that come in from Erie a lot, and they just absolutely love the city. We have here what Erie doesn't have. We have a gorgeous downtown. The architecture is beautiful downtown. And I just want to try to make it just a little bit better. You know, the conservative commentator Ben Shapiro said, "I don't have enough hate, I don't have enough hate inside of me to be a Democrat." I think that's projection. I think that's when you're trying to throw something at somebody else. Put that, put that title or that tag on somebody else when it's really you that has that inside of you. I'm hoping that we have no protest when our president comes for the unveiling of Biden Street and the expressway. I think it would be a negative for the city to have that happen. And I hope the people who don't support the president will just be civil and be decent and honor him in being here. He is our native son. He deserves that much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I seem to always come back to an old subject. You know, I keep these little folders in a cabinet, and this one is marked "Parking." So since I had spoken at City Council in the past, it was with great interest that I read the article in the October 14 Scranton Times paper by Jim Lockwood, "Parking Authority Members Say Street Garage Rates Too High." I said, "Oh, that's interesting," because I have to agree. I was able to look at the material I had from previous discussions, and the material supplied to me by you Councilman Gahn was very, I don't throw it away. I keep it in my folders because I know it's going to come back again for me to refer to. One of the things that I saw in there was it lists the current rate and the new rate. And it listed it for 2020 current rates. It looks like this. Current rates for the rate structure. So when they were talking about the, you know, not having the rates increase at the kiosses and the parking garages, I thought, "That's a done deal," I thought to myself, because somewhere along the way, there must be a 2021 rate schedule. I didn't get a chance to look on the website to see if it's available to the public. And when I say that, it's not only to me. I park in downtown. I never know whether the kiosk is going to take a credit card, my debit card, or if it's going to take quarters. So I have this little container, a Tupperware container, that I put all my quarters in, and I keep it upside down in my car because I never know which kiosk is going to take what, which is a big fallacy as to the operation of those kiosses. So recently, the article talked about the Parking Authority Board. I thought, "What the devil is that?" Parking Authority Board, and the information that I still have, it talked about the Community Development Properties in Scranton and Corporate, which is a seven-board member, board. Four members from the NDC and three from the City of Scranton. So when I read the name, it said that Board Chairman Alex, let me see if I get his last name right, Malfestas, and Micah Woodward are members of that board. And I thought, I kept thinking, "What board are they talking about? Are they talking about this Scranton Parking Authority? Or are they talking about this Community Development Properties, Scranton? Or is it all the same?" So I thought to myself, I said, "I'm confused, and I've been following this, this NDC corporation and how the money comes in from the kiosk goes to them. What is the general public out there know? And how are we to keep them straight as to what's going on with these kiosses? And maybe it's just me that I didn't understand what the difference between the two." So I, my hat's off to Mr. Malfestas and Michael Woodward. If they can do anything about keeping those rates from going up at the parking kiosses, you know, my hat's off to them. All of us in the city would love for those rates not to go up. I use them a lot, and it only benefits the city for us to come downtown and shop in town where there's some stores. I love Spruce Street, those little shops along there and along Washington Avenue, and I don't know, that little side street. But if you're going to always be wondering, "Do I have my quarters? Do I have my debit card? What am I going to use?" So I'm just hoping that something can be done and that they are successful in their quest. And for a parking ticket, that's another thing. It's $35, because I got one, and it's a $3 processing fee. Well, I scoured all this paperwork that I have here, and I scoured the online site, trying to see if there's someplace I can go and pay for my $35, because I was wrong. I didn't put enough money in the meter, but I really objected to the $3 processing fee. But it didn't seem that I could go anywhere and pay that. So that's some of the things that this Scranton Parking Authority, whoever they are, and this Community Development Properties of Scranton and Corporate with the seven board members really need to look into that because we're the people who are trying to shop downtown, and it's costing us more than some items we buy, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Volenberg, correct me if I'm wrong, but the gentlemen from this company are coming in November 2nd, I think?
November 2nd, Mr. Gahn, yes.
Right. November 2nd, the gentleman from the parking operation will be in here. They usually give us a quarterly update.
From the NDC?
Yes, from NDC. Okay. Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Dukerich. Apologize if I mispronounce your last name.
You were close.
Was I close?
My name is Karen Dukerich, and I'm a resident of the City of Scranton. I live back in the Kaiser Valley section of West Scranton. There is a bar next to my mother's. There has been complaints about the music. Now, if anybody at all should complain about the music, it should be myself, okay? The bar, I sit on the porch with my mom. My mother has dementia, okay? That man plays all these music. He plays all of this, it's nice music. It's some, it's what you can understand. We all enjoy it. You know, my mom sits on the porch, she listens. And he is so respectful that he came to my mom's house and asked, "Is the music too loud?" And it's not. If you came, you can come to my mother's house anytime. You can sit in my mother's house, and you can hardly hear it. When you sit, my mother's kitchen is in the back of the house. When you sit there, you really can't hear it at all. And I promise you, I'm not exaggerating. If you sit in her living room, which is in the front of the house, you can't even hear the music. We enjoy it. The neighbors next door, there's an apartment building. They enjoy it. The people that go in and out of there are very, very respectful. It's families. It's not just people going in there to, you know, have a drink. It's a restaurant. He made it so beautiful next door to our home. Again, my mom lives there, but I stay with her. So his one promise was, "The music will be done at 10 o'clock." And it's done. On Sundays when he has it, I know I'm probably going to be wrong here, he said the music would probably, no, not probably, it would be till 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock, it's done. It doesn't matter if there's anybody at the place or not. It's always done. He's always been very respectful. He's been very respectful of my mother. He's been respectful of the neighbors. Again, we sit in my mother's yard and listen to the music. We don't have to pay for nothing. Do you understand what I mean? It's not that I'm standing here sticking up for him because I freak with the bar. I'm standing up for him because it's so nice. I grew up there. I'm 57 years old, okay? I grew up there. There was always a bar next door. Without, how can I put this? Without there being music at the bar from way back, the bar was louder then than it is now. And that's the honest-to-God truth. So if there's anything you could do to help him, it would be greatly appreciated. I miss, I myself personally miss the music. Now, I live, that's on Jackson Street. It's a dead-end street. I live the next block up, okay? I can hardly hear the music. I would rather be sitting at my mom's house, listening to it. It is enjoyable. And again, I grew up with noise my whole life, living there. So to have a little bit of music, it's nice. You know, tell me when you're sitting at home or in your car, if you're listening to music. It relaxes you. It makes you feel good. Well, that's what this does. And to have anybody complain about the music being loud, again, anyone to be up there, you can come to my mother's. I'll give you her address. Come and sit in the house. You can hardly hear it. So if anybody in the neighborhood is going to complain, it would be us right next door. The only thing separating him and my mother's is a driveway. So if there's anything at all you can do to help him solve this problem with the music, I'm willing, I'll stand up for him in anything he tries to do because it is, it's comfort, it's relaxing. It's, you know, sit back, relax, and, I don't know, enjoy the music. And I hope you understand that because it's not bothering anybody. If it's bothering anybody, it's that they have the problem. You know, it's not a problem with the music at all. Again, and if it was music that you couldn't understand what they were saying, well, yeah, then I'd probably complain. But he's very respectful, and I really hope you can help him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Zelinski.
How you doing? My name is John Zelinski. I'm a resident of Scranton, 1437 Fellow Street. And I also am the owner of Backstreet's Tiki Bar, 2225 Jackson Street. I, along with 20-plus other restaurant and bar owners, have put this petition in order to move the news, the noise ordinance out of the PLCB hands and place it back into the city's hands. We all pay an annual entertainment tax to the city in order to provide entertainment to our patrons. I myself have always followed the local noise ordinance, which I was zoned in for. I actually cut my music off at the correct time, which you just heard. I'm always looking out for my neighbors. The guidelines. In fact, the neighbors who have, in fact, have come to me personally and offered to help me out to provide this order to bring back the entertainment at my establishment. My establishment has held many fundraisers for local communities, for the local community, including our local veterans, which I did last year. I was sad to say that I had to turn down the fundraiser for the veterans this year because I was not allowed to have live music. So last year, we raised over $2,300 during COVID. We had a drive-through barbecue to go through. The City of Scranton let me shut down the street. We're selling tickets for the barbecue. We had Chris Shrive, who was a local veteran, country music singer. We had EJ the DJ. We had the wannabes. We had all different, and the B Street Band came up here, and we raised over $2,300 for our local veterans. I'm sad to say that I wasn't able to do that this year because of this ordinance that is in place. That's why I'm here to change this. However, it's impossible to do this because there's no time limits with the PLCB. I am zoned in currently from the zoning meeting to have music. I even backed it down to nine o'clock for the neighbors during the week. It's 11 o'clock. I said 10 o'clock on the weekends for the neighbors, 10 o'clock. That's more than fair, and they agreed. But according to the PLCB Liquor Control Board, there is no time. You cannot even have music playing at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, which is unfair to local establishments like me and all the other ones that sign this. Because if you stand outside, you're property line, and they hear music, you get fined. And music can't stop over the property line. And I try to keep it fair, as she said before, with the noise and keep it down, keep it within the ordinances. All I'm trying to do is follow the city ordinance, which I was zoned in for, and do what you guys allowed me to do, the city, and provide nice entertainment, a nice family restaurant. We're closed early, 11 o'clock on the weekends. We're out of there during the week. I'm just trying to do the right thing for the city here, too. For myself, I'm a single dad raising two young boys. For myself, I'm a single dad raising two young boys. Anybody who comes to me, we've been doing funerals there, fundraisers, any kind of graduation parties, a lot of good positive stuff to bring back their Backstreets. But when you have a graduation party, I'm sure you want to have a DJ. When you want an election party, they have a music talk over the loudspeaker. It is illegal to talk over the loudspeaker to go over the thing. That has to stop. So I'm asking, I'm begging you to take this in consideration for not only myself, all the other local restaurants and bars in Scranton here, to get this law changed, move forward to follow the law that you guys put in place for me.
I have a question for you, Mrs. Zelinski. First, thanks for coming to speak tonight. So if someone complains, you know, you're following the law and you're zoned in, as you stated, from the city's perspective. When someone calls to complain, what happens when the PL, like what happens next? Do you get fined or what?
They were calling the Scranton Police, Newhurst Times Scranton Police. They have the letter there you guys have that I am zoned in with the city. Scranton Police took this. They stopped taking the calls. They said unless you're playing music outside after 10 o'clock, do not bother calling us. We're not going to come there. He's obeyed the city ordinance. He's doing the law. So I haven't been doing that. So they've been stopped coming there. The issue is, if you call the PLCB, you don't even know they're there. They come in, you get a letter that states that they were here from this day and this date and they heard music over the property line on this date there. And I didn't even know who came in or who was there or nothing. I receive a letter and a fine.
And a fine. How much is the fine?
$250. And it keeps going as you keep going up there. We're in the process of talking with Frank, my attorney, to go with the fight the fines with the PLCB. But it's just, it's not fair to have, even if it's 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
I mean, to play music. I mean, the loudspeakers over the, for the games next door for the kids are louder.
Right.
You know?
Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I appreciate you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Cook.
My name is Barbara Cook. I live back Kaiser Valley and back there probably for 45 years. And I'm here for John. We do not hear any music at all. The neighbors that lived across the street, when he told me there was noise, I said, oh, you mean across the street? They had, they would come in with cars that, uh-huh, Beamers and everything else. And they would put speakers on top of their cars and play the radio and you were vibrating in the house. And that's what I thought the complaint was. Him, no. We've had fundraisers. As a matter of fact, I was just with my grandson and my family. They had a fundraiser for the West Scranton Invader Wrestling Club. I could take my grandchildren there. And like I said, I know John for a long time, probably since he's a little boy. He was very good friends with my son Tommy. He passed away about five years ago. And John has come up to our house. He knows my husband. He needs open-heart surgery. He comes up, brings us things if we need it. His arms are always around me. Take it easy, Mrs. Cook. You could do this. I've been doing this for a long time, taking care of my son. The other two, they're good. But like I said, John, he's an asset. And what he did down there is absolutely beautiful. You could hear the music from the Little League field when they play the music for the little guys that play football. I love listening to that. But we don't hear John. Like I said, the neighbors, yeah. But it doesn't bother us. It's nice, like Karen said, to be out there. We're a little village back there, Kaiser Valley. And when John asked me to speak, it was not a problem. I know him forever. He was at our pool as my boys grew up. And probably half of you might even know them. Do they, John? I don't even know. But I'm proud of where I live and I'm proud of who I am and I'm proud of him. He became something. I watched him grow. I watched them graduate, walk off the stage. Things I hope like that can happen again. And to destroy what he, we walked in that place. It was so beautiful. I mean, what he did in there was, it was like you were on vacation. You were on an island. I felt like I was on an island because we haven't been able to take a vacation. And he stopped at my house today. I said, I'll be there. I'm all scruffy, but I told him, I said, oh, we just got a puppy. We just adopted a dog. He's one year old. And I said, early this morning, I'm trying to chase the dog. Now I keep a leash on him, but the yard is fenced. But again, please help John. We don't want to see him have to go. He has children. And for anybody not to care about kids is beyond me. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That exhausts the sign-in sheet. Would anyone else in the audience like to address counsel?
Tom Coyne, Oak Avenue, Manuka. In looking at the proposal last week, the information on a third-class city, it called back me going to the commission report from 1973. And one of the comments in there was referring to only the third-class city code. In the event that the city reverts to third-class city, the initial form of government would be a commission form. Commissioner Legman asked why. And Mr. O'Connell on that responded, because that is the way the third-class city code reads. The next step in a third-class city code is then to create a commission, just as this commission exists. You would then have the option of selecting a councilmatic form of government, commission government, or a mayor of council, a mayor council form of government. I'm not sure if that's been updated or changed. But it is something of concern that if we go to a third-class city, at the point that we move over into that, the mayor and council may no longer effectively exist. And we'd be going into a commission to again decide. Just a point for thought. You also had mentioned last week why people had wanted to change the Home Rule Charter. What were some of the issues that might have been involved in it? One is approval by cowardice. The normal branch of government, which this mimics, is the legislative and the executive branch in the federal government. In the federal government, when a bill, an ordinance goes to the mayor or president to sign, there are three options. Options is approval, veto, or in the federal government, a pocket veto. In the city government, we have approval by cowardice. Instead of a pocket veto, we have a pocket approval. Or the mayor can sit on something for a period of time. It expires and automatically is approved as law. Obviously, the reason for this is they can then say, I didn't vote for this. I never signed it. It just happened. If there is something that's going to put something into law, it should be changed where it should be a yes, not a acceptance by avoidance. Act 511. We talked, because we're a home rule charter, we're not bound by Act 511. In the original documents, it talked about that and also talked about possibility of following Act 511 and putting any extra expenditures to a referendum by the people. That's something to consider. Violations of charters. When a government body or person in the body violates the government of charter, there seems to be no direct implications, a stern letter. But it can happen over and over again without any implications to the people who have violated the charter. Budget changes. I'd love to see the budget being mandated to be supplied to you by September 1st, complete, so that the community and the council has months to review, audit, and look at what's there. By having it at the last minute, it becomes a rush every single year of, we have three sessions left to approve it, so we can't look at it because we have to get it done. That's a disservice to the community, a disservice to everyone who wants to look at that budget itself. In lieu of taxes distribution, when it gets targeted to specific neighborhoods and not fairly among all of them. Financial collection numbers, that when we have finances that are reported on, that somehow we have inconsistencies repeatedly from finances that come to this body. Is there no resolution for someone who is not competent enough to double-check their numbers for their job? If they cannot control the numbers supplying it to the body, how can they control the numbers for the city? If they cannot do that, how do we get rid of them? Because obviously, they are not qualified or not doing their job. I'll leave it at that because there's a lot more to say. But that's just a bite of what we would want to look at changing with a home rule charter, some of the structural foundations in this government to make accountability viable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Marie Schumacher. I am glad there's going to be some discussion on 5C because I tried to read that today and I could make not a lot of sense out of it. And the usual boilerplate that is behind it was not there. So I'm looking forward to what it actually does. And to tell Joan, the sewer authority at their last meeting did agree to sign a contract with an audit for an audit. So that is underway, at least that one is. I'm going to start now with the things that have been, after my time is up. So about five weeks ago, I asked about the collection of the delinquent refuse fees by Portnoy. And you said we could get them, but I have not seen anything yet. Can you tell me during Fifth Order when we are going to get those numbers?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you. And then Scranton tomorrow. I go by that Pocket Park twice at least every week. And it appears to be stalled. And it seems to me there's been a lot longer of a pause on Scranton tomorrow coming in and giving your reports than there used to be. So I wonder if it's really stalled or what's going on down there? Is it going to move forward again? And I'm still curious about whether or not that, what was being worked on there had something to do with the evacuation of the federal building, even though it was brief. I would like to know that, just because I'm curious. Now, this afternoon, well, actually yesterday, I was looking through stuff and I thought, gee, it's getting close to the 15th of November and we'll be getting our budget. And last year's budget for this year was filled with a lot of things because there was so much change that was happening in that. So I went to go back and look. And I did find in there that there was one section, page 21, I think perhaps, where they said, they had a compilation of grants that had been asked for but not determined yet and ones that had been won, et cetera. And the safer grant was in the one that had been, had been gone, waiting. So I thought, well, okay, I'm going to go back to the 2019, some of the couple of the 2019 agendas and see if that was ever brought before counsel. Well, first, I couldn't get through on, I don't know, I couldn't get through on the past business, past meetings. Then I tried later. I got through on them. But when I got to the, to actually looking at one, just from 2019, it said something like, sorry, this page, this material is not available. So I don't know what IT is doing, but it's very frustrating when you're, you don't have a lot of time and you keep running into brick walls and you don't know when it's going to happen. So I think IT really needs to get their act together. And is there an end date for when this new software is going to be 100% in effect? Again, if you know that, I would like to hear about that in Fifth Order. And then the other thing that's on the city's website is integrity and transparency. The failure to distribute the ARF funds made the capital budget null and void. And I'm hoping that doesn't go over into the operating budget. But that needs to happen. I don't know why the mayor or the administration is not making that distribution, just plugging it in every time you need money. And so I look forward to that happening soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to address counsel? Mr. Boldenberg?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments tonight?
Just a couple of comments. We asked about a personnel report last week. Mr. Boldenberg, do we get any updates on a personnel reporter, if we would be receiving one of those?
The request was made, Mr. Schuster, but no report as yet.
All right. Can we possibly add, what job descriptions would we need? Is there any that we've been waiting on or we've been waiting on most of them?
All of them.
Can we also add job, city job descriptions to that with the presentation we just got from the IT department, maybe specifically those job descriptions?
I'll add them tomorrow.
All right. Also, Third Order, we got correspondence about the stop sign removal in, over in Green Ridge. Could we maybe put that in Third Order for next week? And I'd like to thank the DPW for adding the crosswalk in Woodlawn and North Washington Street. And there was also, I got a citizens complaint today from the 1600 block of Hawthorne, which I'll follow up with you after the meeting, Mr. Boldenberg. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman McCandor, any motions or comments tonight?
A few. So in recent weeks, we brought up the issue with the truck traffic in the Bellevue section of West Side and the ordinance that's supposed to prevent it. So we were back and forth with some dialogue between the various departments. And it was unclear. I mean, there was a gentleman officer that retired that, you know, was certified in the weights and measures. So last week, we heard that no one else is in the trainings in the Springs. So I want to report out that, because we inquired about the sheriff's department maybe helping us out with that. So I received today, so I want to report out some more information. So this is from the police chief. And I want to thank him because he's always very quick with response to inquiries that I have on behalf of citizens. So the sheriff's department is not able to inform these types of details. So, okay, we know that. The SPD has several officers trained in weights and measures. So last week, we heard there was none. So this is good news. And that he will be coordinating with ship supervisors to keep the truck details going in Bellevue. So I'm glad to report that out. And I'm sure that the Bellevue people will be happy to hear that. Go ahead.
Do we know when Officer Guy's last day is going to be?
It was last week. I think it was last week.
I think there were some citations issued and I'm not sure if he'd be showing up at the magistrate's office to make sure that they're not thrown out. So maybe we could follow up with that.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So. Okay, so recently, the Code Enforcement Department formed a committee, and they met twice, and, you know, did some brainstorming, collaboration, recommendation, which is good moving forward. But from the meetings, some questions have been posed to me because, you know, the meeting minutes are out there. And on behalf of them, I want to ask a question. So there isn't, you know, NEIC is the private contractor that does whatever we can't do, okay, in addition to our, the Code Enforcement inspectors. So the question posed to me is that we have a certified Uniform BCO for mechanical on payroll. So we can, you know, we have one in-house we can use. If so, this would definitely save money for the city and the people to be inspected. If so, why isn't that employee being utilized for such? Okay, could you please inquire about that to Mrs. Cipriani?
I will, Mr. McCandor.
Let's see what else. And also, you know, while you're at it, could you please provide counsel a copy of the NEIC contract also? That'd be most helpful for
I will.
further questions I might get. Okay, and then I also have a complaint. There's an abandoned house on the 600 of Palm Street with junk cars with no license plate. So could we please send that over also to Code Enforcement? And last May, it was, we had, there was a great rollout with the Hometown Heroes program over in West Side. It was the pilot, which was great, and it was a collaborative effort between Leadership Lackawanna, which was one of their projects, and Neighbor Works. But I've been receiving a bunch of complaints as the banners are, they're not holding up too well. You know, most municipalities, they're up there for years and they look great. I mean, we know that this was a project with Leadership Lackawanna, and it was supposed to be handed off, and it has been handed off, so it's handed off to Neighbor Works, which eventually, the West Scranton Neighborhood Group graciously took it upon themselves to continue this process. So my concern is the piloted banners that were rolled out under this, you know, collaborative effort, the responsibility maintaining these. I mean, a couple of times, I called on behalf of owners of these, or sponsors of these banners, saying, you know, it's a hardware issue because some of them are falling down, the hardware holding them is, I guess, is, you know, it's cheaper than we probably should have used, or, so, they look terrible. Some are torn, some are gone. What I, and, you know, Veterans Day is coming up Thursday, November 11th, so could you please do me, and I know that Chris Smith was the contact with the mayor's office, Todd Polcy is still involved in the transition, but we need to have, take some responsibility of the ones that were rolled out as a pilot. So could you please share these concerns with Todd Polcy from Neighbor Works, Chris Smith from the mayor's office? And let's see if we can get these fixed, because they were installed by a contractor of the city, and kind, but we need some follow-up on this because they don't look that great.
I'll take care of it, sir.
All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I just have one update. Last week, it was suggested during citizens' participation that we have better communication with our state legislators, and I was in agreement with that. And so I've reached out to Representative Kyle Mullins, who is happy to come in to speak with counsel and to provide an update on what he's been doing and what's going on in the state legislature, or at least the House of Representatives, that could impact the city of Scranton. I know for me personally, it's hard to stay up to date on state politics because we're very focused on the local here, but knowing that things happening on the state level certainly have an impact on us, I think it would be helpful for him to come in and provide that update. He represents the 112th district that includes part of Scranton. There's also the 113th district for the State House, and that seat currently is up for a special election. And I'll also be reaching out to Senator Marty Flynn to see if he would like to come in to also speak with counsel. So I'll have that set up through Mr. Boldenburg to see when Mr. Mullins would be able to come in to speak with us.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes, just briefly. Mr. Boldenburg, I've gotten some more complaints about the repair shop on the corner of 16, of the 1600 of South Webster and Palm Street. It had the tires in the backyard, but now there's cars that are parked on the sidewalks. They don't have any license plates on them, so would we be able to pass that along to licensing inspections? Also, I got a request for a stop sign at the corner of Wales and Durkin in North Scranton that I'll be passing along. And I've gotten some, a lot of complaints about some alleys and courts and the condition of them in South Scranton, and I'll be talking to DPW Director Preambo about those in the next few days. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Schumacher, I don't believe that we received any report on the delinquent refuse fees from Portnoy. I know that we requested it, but Mr. Boldenburg, if we can request that again, I would also be interested in seeing that. We sent questions about the SAFER grant as well a few weeks ago. We haven't received anything on that, although I did talk to the mayor briefly about it. And the city was granted, I believe, a 30-day extension on the grant. They were still discussing what to do with it. And finally, I want to thank the DPW and Director Preambo for the quick action on the crosswalk at North Washington Avenue and Woodlawn Street. There's a gentleman last week that came with the petition, and within a day or two, they were right out there and took care of it. So I want to thank the crew at DPW and Mr. Preambo for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
5B, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of J. Conrad Bosley, 13 Leslie Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1-8505, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board effective September 20, 2021. Mr. Bosley will be replacing Nell Boyle, who resigned effective August 17, 2021. Mr. Bosley will fill the unexpired term of Ms. Boyle and will expire on October 11, 2024.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I wanted to thank Ms. Boyle for her service to the Harb. She owns a local realting company, and I believe she'll be moving out of the city, but her work on there was appreciated. And welcome to Mr. Bosley as well, and thank you for his interest in serving.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution. Resolution authorizing city of Scranton to seek exemption from Section 4-493, subsection 34 of the liquor code.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, Solicitor Hayes, before we have comments on this, can you just take us through from start to finish how this legislation ended up on the agenda, and then, you know, your involvement with it, and just explain it to the public?
Certainly. Section 49334 of the liquor code prohibits licensed liquor establishments from using or permitting loudspeakers or similar devices to project the sound of music that would be heard beyond their property line. The liquor code also provides that municipalities have the ability to exempt themselves from that provision of the liquor code with regard to noise. That has to be done through a resolution that will then be provided to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and the liquor control board can then have it, will then have a hearing and entertain the resolution and either approve it, modify it, or deny it. It's my understanding that several members of counsel have been approached by owners of restaurants, bars, and taverns who have made investments in outdoor dining and bar areas due largely to address the social distancing and other government mandates that arise from the COVID-19 pandemic, in order to offer their patrons a more comfortable environment, which is outside. They had reached out to council members indicating that this provision of the liquor code essentially prohibits them from operating those outdoor dining and bar spaces because there is, there is music in the outdoor space. So what they asked, a dozen or so approached, have submitted their recognition that they would like for the city of Scranton to follow the lead of other municipalities, including Pottsville and Allentown, who have exempted their municipality from the noise regulation contained in the liquor code. So essentially, what this proposed resolution does is, would allow the city of Scranton to be exempt from the noise regulations of the liquor code and enforce its own noise ordinance for a period of one year. And at the expiration of the one year, counsel can either, and the mayor could either allow to, just allow it to expire, or could renew it. My firm has reached out to the solicitors for Pottsville and Allentown, both of whom indicated that it's been, it's been a successful change to their, to their, the laws that govern their municipalities. So essentially, it's pulling local control over noise enforcement. Now, because our city is situated where the bars and restaurants are located within the neighborhoods, there's no way for us to just identify a single business district or single district that would be exempt from the liquor code. So what's proposed is a citywide exemption from the noise regulation of the liquor code. And that's what's before counsel for introduction here today.
So just so I'm clear on this, for those who may be watching at home that might think, okay, well, what if a bar or an establishment is actually playing music outside of the limits, or is playing it so loud that it is, not in the case of, that was presented here tonight, but it is an actual hindrance to the neighborhood? Is it correct, Solicitor Hayes, that our police department would still be able to enforce our own laws, so it's not like we're wiping it off the books and bars and restaurants and establishments could just do whatever they want?
That's, so the city has its own noise ordinance, and the police department and other code enforcement officials have been enforcing that for years. So that will continue. All this does is take the liquor control board out of the enforcement process of noise violations, because they are imposing a different standard than what the city officials are doing. You heard earlier today from an owner of a bar who has been granted permission by the zoning hearing board to operate an outdoor bar and restaurant during certain periods of time. Well, that, if the liquor control board has contacted regarding that particular bar, and they come to the property line and they hear audible music, they can, under their ordinance, issue a fine or other penalty against that licensee, even though that licensee is in compliance with the city ordinances. So it's, there's, this is fostering contradictory laws, which is causing problems for our, the owners of the bars, taverns, and restaurants in the city. So what we only, we only ask for one year, so we can see how it works and see how, if it's problematic for the police department, if it's problematic for the residents, then we can let it expire. But I think what I've heard from counsel, from council members and elsewhere, is that these business owners need assistance. They need help, especially after what they've gone through in the last year and a half because of the pandemic.
In terms of next steps, so this is a resolution sort of beyond, if it moves forward tonight, and then next week will potentially be final passage. So if next week, there are three votes and it passes, what are the next steps? When will it take effect?
So now, when the resolution is adopted, or if the, if and when the resolution is adopted, it is then sent to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, who will schedule a hearing, I believe it's within 60 days. They will offer the opportunity for residents and business owners to voice their support or opposition to the proposed change, the proposed exemption from the liquor code. And then they will issue a decision. They could approve it, or they could modify it. In other words, they could restrict our citywide exemption. They could, they technically could limit the amount of time that we would be exempt from, although I don't anticipate that that would be the case because we've put such a short timeframe on this exemption. So then, after that, we would be, we'd be exempt from their jurisdiction for purposes of noise only. You know, it's only with regard to noise violations. It's not with regard to any other violations of the liquor code. So in other words, you know, liquor licensees still can't serve after hours, they can't, they still can't serve minors, they still can't serve visibly intoxicated individuals. They're all, those provisions remain in place. This is only with respect to noise violations. I think that was my cue to stop talking.
That was your cue. I think you explained it well. Okay. Any comments from counsel?
You mean on the question?
Or on the question, yes, any, on the question.
So on the question, I fully support this legislation. I've worked in every sector in the hospitality industry over the course of my career. I sympathize. You guys were the hardest hit, I believe, the hardest hit with regards to the pandemic. So this legislation will provide realistic parameters, okay, that makes sense, and it's fair and equitable. Also, you know, out of necessity, outdoor venues were created last year. They're everywhere. So not being able to entertain your customers that were forced to eat outside just doesn't make any sense. So, and this is just a way to recoup some losses. I mean, it was a tough year for everybody, I get it, but I still believe hospitality were hit the hardest with this, so I'm fully supporting and voting yes for this, the movement of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, on the question, I would also like to add that I'm in support of this motion. Our local neighborhood bars are important to the city of Scranton, to businesses, to our economy, and I know, I have a neighborhood bar just a few doors down from me, and they, I know them to be very respectful and responsible owners. I'd probably say the only issue is parking on the weekends, which I know was brought up as a concern over in the Pine Brook neighborhood. But in terms of noise, it's, you know, never, never been an issue for us. And I think as long as we're enforcing the ordinance that we have, which is fair with the times that are laid out in there, and the decibels, and it's very specific for the guidelines for enforcement from the SPD, then I'm happy to vote for this, to make it easier for bars to bring in customers and to have music and entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the question, you know, the current situation obviously is unreasonable, the whole notion that you have businesses that have gone through terrible times during the pandemic and who have struggled, and the way that they try to recoup some of those losses is to have entertainment and, you know, eating and drinking outside, and then to turn around and penalize them for doing that, it just doesn't make any sense. So I think that this action is reasonable. I don't think it ties the hands of our city police department in terms of dealing with the business that is not following the rules, so I will be voting in favor of it. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth Order 6A, reading by title, file the counsel number 88, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting LLC, to provide information, technology, management services.
Heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that. Item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I'm not totally sold on this contract yet. As we stated during the caucus, I really think we need to see the budget for the IT department, which it was promised that we will see that before next week. I am certainly not in any rush to approve this next week. I think depending on when we receive those figures, we can take our time with this. The budget, you know, we're not going to get the budget until the middle of November, and this is going to be a major cost. Over a four-year period, we're talking about nearly a million dollars. Does it make sense? Yes, I think it makes sense. We obviously have had problems with the IT department. Any other entity with this many users has a third-party vendor, for the most part, unless you're going to, unless you're going to hire more people and pay a higher salary to the IT director, which has been discussed here before. What I'm interested in is what the department is going to look like. We went from three employees, including a director, to five employees. I'm not clear, and I should have asked, but I completely forgot, how many people are actually in the department right now? I know there's five positions. We do not have a director. I don't know if all the other positions are filled. Yeah, there may only be three. So again, I'm not totally sold on this contract yet. I think we need to see it in the big picture in terms of how it fits with, within the budget. But I will be voting yes to move it forward, and I think if we have to table it next week, it's not a big deal. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I've expressed concerns in the past, especially with this department. So I'd echo your concerns, Mr. Gahan, some of the concerns we raised in caucus. And I do want to see the IT budget projection for '22 before this vote.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just agree that this can't be done piecemeal. It has to be looked at, you know, at the full budget of the IT department.
On the question, I'm in agreement with what's already been said. I also plan on speaking with Mr. Dealey, the network manager, to get a bigger perspective as to the plans for the IT department, you know, what we could be looking at, not just a year from now, but a few years, and, and better understanding what, what our needs are and to justify this contract.
Anyone else?
Yeah, of course, I agree with my colleagues here. And during caucus, we heard a lot. We heard a lot of great things that can happen, but we didn't hear the figures, what it's going to totally cost, and the bodies that are going to support that versus last year. So I'm also going to vote to move it forward, but let's see. I still need information.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 87, 2021, setting forth its intent to provide funds to prepay in full its outstanding federally taxable general obligation note, series of 2018, providing when this ordinance shall become effective, authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other required documents, and the taking of all other required action by specified officers of the city, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As the chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, back when we first took out this note back in 2018, it was to infuse the money that we already had set aside from the sewer authority into the pension system. Just the way that state law is written when it comes to pensions, by taking out a loan and putting the money in, we were able to take advantage of reduced MMO payments, which is the minimum municipal obligations that we pay every year. So those were reduced then. So the savings that we realized over the last three years, more than, more than cover the 1.4 million that we're going to have to pay to cover the interest payments on this. And it was always the plan to pay this off early. So not only will it help, you know, our financing moving forward, but we're also in a good position when it comes to our debt.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 226, 2021, authorizing reappointment of Mary Ann Sinclair, 1310 Luzerne Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to serve as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority. Ms. Sinclair's prior term expired on September 27th, 2021. Ms. Sinclair is being reappointed to a five-year term effective September 28th, 2021, and will expire on September 27th, 2026.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? I want to once again thank Mrs. Sinclair. She's dedicated much of her life to public service. This is just another example, and she'll continue to do a great job. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order.
This, there is a piece, 8A, if you look on the agenda, the CDBG program, the Home Investment Partnership, which we tabled a few weeks ago. We are going to bring this back, I think, next week, correct, Mr. Waldenberg?
The week after, Mr.
The week after, okay, so two weeks. But that was tabled to allow for public comment. So there'll be a motion next week to place it in Sixth Order. And then 8B on the agenda tonight is the Harb recommendation for the Plotkin Shoe Store. Next week, there's going to be a motion to place it in Seventh Order for a final vote. The gentleman, Mr. Pollak, waived his right to the public hearing. That's why we didn't have it. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.